Tuesday agenda, excuse me, meeting for Tuesday, April twenty first, two first, two thousand twenty. Do I have a motion to suspend the rules?
Second.
Motion by George Lawrence, seconded by Paul Tisdale. All in favor? Would you please?
Mr. President, we have an agenda. We have agenda.
Yeah. I just moved, do we have to move it first and then suspend it? Do you have one? I don't have one.
There you go.
Sorry, you don't have a tablet in front of you? Well.
I got, I got.
Does everybody else have a copy of the agenda, council members? Copy of the agenda? You have your phone, okay?
Oh, phone though.
All right, we read the amendments, please.
Remove item five B from the consent agenda, resolution to establish just compensation for Pops Ferry Road extension.
The move is amended.
Second. We have a motion to accept the agenda as amended by George Lawrence, seconded by Paul Tisdale in discussion. All in favor, the signal to raise your hand. Motion case unanimously. Let's bring us to the presentation agenda. Mr. Mayor, your report.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. Again, as far as the city of Biloxi, we're trying to manage our way through this crisis and figure out where we want to come out on the other side and examine the options we have and the support we possibly could get. But three of the council met yesterday, talking about some things on how, I guess, opening up America again can take place in a little bit different manner that is happening, but with regard to segment by segment, different restaurants, casinos, of course, but other beauty salons, hair parlors, barber shops, I guess, and there was some discussion, we had some discussion this morning with the mayors, and I think the lieutenant governor was there, and some things were talked about, about the second wave of, I think, SBA loans for the, those who are in business and suffering, and that those things are, I guess, Friday, I say, I think there'll be some monies available for the people who got boxed out in the first phase of SBA loans. But as far as the city of Biloxi specifically, I think we're going to get off our personnel emergency mode and call all of us, all the crew back in, and hopefully we'll be productive in trying to get focused on the jobs that we can do with regard to what is closed and the opportunities that citizens have to be normal, and so that's what we're hoping. Mike, I think we had a little report on what we had as far as numbers of COVID-19 folks out, and not that many.
The six hundred and fifty or so employees of the city, we've had just eleven positive cases, ten of those in the fire department, one in the port. All eleven of those employees are back to work, so there are no active cases as of today.
And I think.
I think it's more than remarkable that the police department, as active as they have been and involved in the community, that there have been no cases, but they've taken extraordinary steps through PPE and self distancing and so forth, and they've really worked it pretty hard, and the police department has, and, you know, I mean, they're out there in the face of a lot of people, not one single case, pretty remarkable. So as far as the numbers, I think the mayor's wanted me to repeat, we have one hundred and forty-six employees who are sitting home, drawing administrative leave with pay. But the intent, the intent of that was to get as many people safe and sheltered at home as we could and still do the essential services. One hundred and forty-six on administrative leave. There are over three hundred police and fire first responders that are on duty. Now, all of the people on duty, according to our ordinance fifteen dash one dash twenty-one, when we recall people during an emergency, we pay premium pay, so those three hundred and six, actually, three hundred and six fire and police employees that are working are drawing time and a half. So that's a cost, an additional cost to the city that we're tracking. And then in addition to those firemen and police, there are a good many public works employees, we cut that down to about a third of their staff, public works, engineering, community development, so forth, down to about a third of their normal staff is at work, and the rest are administrative leave with pay. That's our numbers, and as the mayor is saying, we're looking real hard at ending the emergency personnel staffing situation and bringing everybody back to work next week.
Yeah. That's, that's the truth, and I think we're very, you know, fortunate with, you know, with regard to the curfew, I think we'll still leave that in place, and that has really put our police and fire in a better position. I think the calls for services were down like fifty-one percent, I think, where crime was, but the calls for actual services, of course, there were people in the casinos and on the streets, but, so that has been working, and I think the police and fire have been both proactive in, you know, addressing things that need to be addressed. You know, the beach kind of opened by surprise on, you know, last Friday, when we were thinking it was Monday, but it's working all right. I don't think, the beach is not that great of a concern, but we, you know, the folks that gathering numbers, no matter whether they're on the beach or on the CTA bench, those are our concerns, and those, you know, one gets a case and one turns into ten, ten turns into a hundred, a hundred turns into a thousand, that's how that goes, that's what we want to prevent when we open up, you know, for business again. Going back to open up America and what the, what was discussed yesterday and what the president's talked about, this fourteen day period where we're all experiencing flat or negative issues with regard to hospitalizations or testing, kind of is a bad number, but I think the deaths as well as hospitalizations are the key I think we need to pay attention to, but we're looking for guidance from either the president or, you know, municipal department of health in order to get what is our real curve for Harrison County or the coastal area. We did ask the governor, lieutenant governor today on what were the thoughts from the state side on how he will implement, again, in the, the president's leaving it up to the governors, and the governor's going to kind of make some calls on how he will roll, we're not going to wait on the whole state in order to open up business again. You know, naturally, we were thinking initially, just like the highway department in, by region, south, central, north, but I think now it's either the county or cities, and Hoesman mentioned, this lieutenant governor mentioned that, you know, the home rule to, so the cities can make those calls along with your city council, I believe that's what I interpreted that statement to be. But, so, we're, you know, making an effort to organize our thoughts on sector by sector, and, you know, again, what was evident throughout this whole thing is trying to, you know, prevent or minimize a second wave of these COVID occurrences. Now, and there's a number of technology and a number of just pure common sense on how we can track, you know, these things. The contact tracing was a big element of all, of everyone, so if a second wave hits, they don't have to go hours and hours with interviews with CDC and some of those folks to figure out where you got this thing or where, you know, it was picked up from. So I think that'll be part of our conversation on how we will roll out sector by sector, and we're devising a list of, to give you an example, restaurants, hair salons, even gyms, and some of those things are inherent, I think, cosmetology board has a lot of restrictions on just sanitary conditions in there, so we'll kind of take all of this in consideration on what we had asked, you know, things, operations to do, you know, in a restaurant, obviously, if you have, you know, two or three hundred seating capacity, you might want you to reduce that, and we'll have that conversation with each one of those, you know, at least a representative group of people in that industry, to what is possible, what they can, what would be profitable, and of course, measure this as we rock and roll through the reopening, so.
If I, if I could just add one thing, please, any councilman who have not yet read the guidelines for opening up America again, it comes from, all the way from the president, it's a really good piece of work that gives us an idea of what the, how this is going to work phase by phase, and gives some very specific guidance about who's in which phase, and it all, it all boils down to us at this point, we don't have this answer. The governor's current executive order, the third executive order, number seventy-three, runs out the end of April, so the question is, at what point is he going to open the state up, or will he delegate that to the counties based on how they're doing on their downward trajectory, the downward trajectory of the cases, because our county is, has a downward trajectory today, so you would think that we would be able to go into phase one of the three phases and open businesses up when the governor's executive order expires at the end of April, but we'll see, we don't know the answer of where that's going to be delegated down to the county level or not.
I think our next question is, you know, for a city, is to figure out where we are in that fourteen day cycle, we may be seven, eight days into it right now. Dr. Stephen Metropolis from Pasca Goo has been very helpful, and I'll probably have a few conversations with him, he's in the trenches with regard to that, and made some mention in today's conference about things seem to be going in the right direction, but we don't know whether that meets the, you know, the opening up of America guidelines and when the governor will pull the call, you know, pull the trigger on y'all rock and roll, but so what we're going to do as a, as a city, I think, is to meet, organize the types of businesses that we, in phase one, I think there's phase four, there's four phases in this whole thing, but phase one should be coming up shortly, and we need to have a plan on how things can, can be rolled out again. Again, with those conditions and with, just using common sense, since we're, you know, not through this event, but, you know, we're working through the event, but we may ask, you know, operate under these modes, just similar to the big box stores, and that they've done well, and I want to congratulate everybody for paying attention, just the social distancing and, you know, groups of less than, you know, five or ten was working, I think, well. I think the two things that most folks are anxious to see is to go out and get something to eat somewhere, or go to restaurants, and that would be how, at least on my personal list, in churches. So we'll, you know, be able to have a handle, and it may not be business as usual, probably will not be business as usual, but again, those things that are pointed out in this document, we'll probably hope to implement as, within reason, to actually do business, so that, I think that's about it, Mike, I haven't. Paul, did we forget, did I forget anything that happened at the mayor's meeting? I think we were all right today.
You hit all the points.
Yeah, okay.
Mr. Mayor, one question I have, is there somewhere on our website or somewhere you can guide the council and even the people at home where to find the document that you're referring to?
Can you, can you load it up for us?
On the front page of coronavirus in the, in the web, Biloxi, yeah, Biloxi, I M S I U S.
Okay, thank you.
And that concludes my report, and I'd be happy to ask you to answer any questions.
Mr. Lawrence?
I had a couple questions, going back to the emergency, that time and a half, are we refunding that money?
Well, we're trying to get some, some additional sources of revenue to reimbursement, that's certainly an extraordinary, but it's not a tremendous deal, but we're, we're going to chase those reimbursements opportunities, at least through FEMA was the genesis of this, so through FEMA, MEMA, and with other options from the feds, will be coming out and we'll be chasing.
In every recent.
We don't know.
In every recent emergency, FEMA was willing to pay us for that, the additional money, they will pay us for the administrative leave with pay, because that's not an increase over our normal costs, but FEMA has always in the past paid for the premium pay for the people that called in, it is running about fifty thousand dollars a week.
Yeah, I think that, that, I don't know the exact number, but I think it's like a hundred and fifty-nine billion dollars that are going to go to states, to their emergency management agencies to distribute to cities and counties for that.
Well, they, Hoesman indicated that they have one point five billion in the bank today, you hit it, one point two and six hundred million to come, yeah, three hundred, okay, so that's what they have now, and I guess they're trying to drill down on how they can deliver, but we have been paying attention to every, you know, extraordinary kind of measures that we have taken, so we'll have a, you know, a blow-by-blow description and a valorization of what we've done to address these, at least from the city standpoint, you know, the business community and personal, really having derived on how we could, you know, help in that manner, but at least from the city's operation, we'll be on top of it.
Another question I have, what can we do as a city under what the state's doing now, or we cannot do anything?
Well, we can, the state, again, as I understood Governor Reeves, he said, you know, these are minimums, and of course, the cities, our counties, can do more stringent things if they, you know, if it's in your wisdom, that's what's going to do some good, and I think we're pretty much on the same page with everything, and I don't think anything was, you know, gave us any hard bind, you know, what the governor did, you know, be before or after what we have done. So, you know, I guess the, our ordinance dictated that if we went to a skeleton crew, which was, you know, in the event, or to reduce the opportunity for this thing to spread, so we did that with a hundred and seventy or so people on, you know, sitting home, so I had no, you know, no problems doing, you know, what the governor said, but he said in a couple of occasions, of course, the cities can do more, but not less.
And another thing, has anybody spoke with anybody in the gaming?
In what, in gaming? No, uh-uh. As far as gaming commission and Larry Gregory, I think there's some conversations going on now, but in talking to a few people in the legislature, I would like to be part of that, you know, since, you know, we've got eight of the twelve casinos down here, and it's a big part, I think, twelve thousand jobs related to that and a big chunk of our revenue, so it's very important that, to, to have a seat at the table, almost like, you know, Corvina is, hey, when you think about things, nobody knows more about the impact of gaming than Biloxi, and, you know, you know it, especially at budget time, and you'll know it again when we start doing these things, but I've expressed that to some folks in the legislature that, you know, when it's time, especially in that gaming legislative area, that those folks, you know, see it from one's perspective, and we see it from, you know, in the trench, day by day perspective, so we need to be considered, just like the Bonnie Carrie, hey, man, don't open these, these things before it's time.
Mayor, is there any conversation, I mean, if there's a time, BP funds, tidling funds, to be able to position them for recovery, I mean, this is the time to step up to the plate.
It is, and, you know, we heard from the state's end, don't come up here just asking for a bunch of money, you know, that was kind of grim to me, I didn't want to hear that from, you know, we, we have a course to, you know, to plot, and we'll do it, but I'm telling you, we need to be prepared to do it, go it alone, we've gone alone before, we'll do it again if we have to, but it's not right, you know, we, we act, our economy, Biloxi's economy puts a lot of, you know, business into it, and we want to be, have at least a seat at the table when things that impact us and those decisions are made that impact us, we want to be part of it.
The other question, and the casino's given, you talk about ten, twelve thousand people going back to work, that's huge.
Yeah.
Just hotels, all of them.
And what we.
Twenty thousand people now working.
Well, again, part of that segment, okay, what, and they have a lot, you know, they got a hole in the dice a little bit, too, in that, if you get into this thing without that contact tracing, we have, it's all a buying opportunity, you got to be, people will be coming to Biloxi, coming to enjoy our, you know, our gaming experience as well as our vacation, because I think we are safer than the average bear, and so I think we need to do it the right way, and if, you know, something spikes up and we have that contact tracing involved, we know how to isolate it and keep it from going exponential, so that's why it's important to do it the right way, do, you know, as the president says, and to say, hey, we'll keep that second wave from them, because if we have a second wave that hits us even for a couple of weeks, we're, we're really in, you know, bad, in a bad way for the end of the year.
I don't know about the right way, that's the best way to do it, that's what you have to do it.
Yeah.
Best way, whatever the best thing that works out.
That's it.
And just like the, Kenny, y'all, what y'all's playing, all y'all hotels and motels and that thing y'all have.
Yeah, we're, so we shut down, we didn't have to, but we did shut down because we just recognized the safety of our, you know, four hundred employees that we have at all our hotels. We planned to open Margaritaville back up on May first and White House Hotel back on May first. The executive team has basically been doing all the repairs and painting and cleaning and sanitation, and we put together our elevated protocols for being safe, not only for our team members, but for, for our guests that are going to be coming back, and I'm hearing throughout the industry, they're doing similar things, so temperature checks both for employees and for guests, we're going to be looking at. We are going to probably limit the amount of wins that we've met, just so we don't have, we can manage the large groups of where we're at, and of course, we got a family entertainment center with a bunch of machines, and we're going to space the available machines, and we got, we actually created a position called a mister that'll walk around with a machine and kind of spray the machine, mist the machines and wipe them down, but I'm hearing that's what other hotels and the casinos are developing those plans right now on how to open safely, social distancing, and then to keep both team members and guests as safe as we possibly can.
So that's a good thing, everybody's got to do this thing in step, and then you have to change maybe, like I said, you have to do three things, you have to do whatever it takes to keep it going.
We got another short-term dilemma, because you have, for instance, a position like a server, and we don't know what the volume is going to be, we're anticipating our volume's going to be low as we ramp back up, and as we call folks back to work, they're going to be making six hundred dollars on that unemployment for a period of time, or they can come back to work for us and maybe make three hundred dollars, so they're going to make more staying out of work for the short period of time, and we're going to have to deal, we're going to have to deal with that and see what our workforce availability is when we start ramping and opening up.
Short-term plans, you can't, you know, after a few weeks.
Yep.
They get that money, so they lose their job, so they swallow a couple of six hundreds, and they're going to get, you go get your job, you get your job.
Yep.
Because in a couple of months, everybody might be gone, back to work, and the person that took that money, you know.
Just, just on a side point, I know all businesses are doing this, and I've noticed some of the council members and executive team, but we ordered three thousand masks for both team members, and then we'll have a supply for guests that come to the hotel that may want to feel a little bit safer, so we're, we're going to be, we're going to look a little different, we're going to act a little different until we, you know, beat this thing and the coast is clear permanently, so.
We just got two thousand, about two thousand and then.
So that was just a couple of orders for hydroxychloroquine, little pack of that product. Anyway, like, one last question, Paul, you plan to open any time, like in the next few days, anything, small steps, or you waiting for the governor, or what?
At this point, you know, unless we're in that fourteen day downturn, downslope or whatever, negative slope, you know, we're, we're planning, we're in a planning mode, at least for the next seven days, but the immediate action is to get the whole crew back working again, and that will happen, you know, next Monday, so that's the most immediate action we'll take, but between now and then, and even next week, we'll be, we'll develop, like we did yesterday afternoon, just develop a list of segments that we would like to roll out, you know, when it closes clear, and those data points would indicate that they're ready to go, so we'll be ready to go, and again, segment by segment, meet with them and say, these are things, as Kenny said, reduce the capacity and reduce the numbers of folks, and have the ability to, to track it through reservations or, or some of those things, or credit cards, there's a number of data that can be gathered without being, you know, unconstitutional, and so I think, especially the restaurant owners and some of those business owners, they would be willing to open up and put people back to work, to do these things, to say, hey, man, I need, you know, maybe take your temperature, I don't know, walking in, but as well as, you know, contact tracing, that's big, I think that's big for everyone in the whole country, because we don't want to get in too much down the road and see we're in the same situation without the tools necessary to isolate and then treat, so that's it.
One last question.
That was your last question, here's another question.
Six o'clock curfew, did we set that or the state set that?
We set that.
All right, could you, I mean, since it's daylight and so long, I'll just, like I talked to you.
Well, who knows, George?
About eight o'clock or something?
By the time, you know, by the time of the end of next week in fourteen, we may just pull the whole thing, so I wouldn't want to go set it for one week or two weeks, and chances are in a couple of weeks that the curfew will be over.
So what you do is you just clear it off completely?
I think so, yeah.
The other thing is, Ron, Ron, this is Jesse.
Yes, it's true.
Yeah.
Your last thing.
The trash, I got more phone calls than Robert Porter, they must have listened to him yesterday.
Yeah.
Because I've got calls all over Porter, Kensington, Bellevue, we're picking up the trash.
Yeah, man.
I've been three weeks, minimum.
Are you talking about rubbish or?
Yeah.
You got it, you got to be picked up.
Yeah, I know, but they're, I talked to the guy who runs that, and they're picking up three hundred tons above what they normally pick up per week right now, because everybody's doing so much work, so three hundred tons more per week, so that's why they're running behind.
Well, you're right, when everybody's home, what are they doing? Cleaning the yard, cleaning out everything, you know, they're going to do way in the roof, they, they ain't figured that one out, they've been sleeping through this thing.
Well, but they only have the capacity.
You're talking to somebody, they're doing good, get them out there with the truck and pick up the stuff, you want to talk to them.
Thank you, Paul. Thank you, George.
Does anyone else have any questions for the mayor?
I have.
One quick, one quick question, I promise it's just one question. Boat launches, that's outside of the trash, that's where I've gotten a lot of the calls.
At this.
Who is in charge of closing and opening those?
Like a park, it's like a park.
It's like on Sunday, on Sunday, the causeway never got opened, all day, it was closed, and so.
All day, the launch closed?
All day, never, the barricades were never moved on Sunday.
I don't think that they know they're in charge. I have a lot in.
Yeah.
They already said well.
Well, they weren't supposed to be open.
And then we have eleven o'clock curfew.
Which ones were closed? If you, you know.
The causeway was closed, but we also have an eleven o'clock curfew.
Next time.
And we have people going and closing these launches off where people are still out.
Out.
And so I think personally, I know we have an eleven o'clock curfew.
If I came in on a boat, you know what I would do?
That's what they're doing, I'm just saying.
Get my boat, get out to one.
Personally, I don't think that it's necessary.
If we just remove the barricades.
I, I just don't think that it's necessary if it's causing, you know, I got multiple calls on Sunday because there were several, the causeway was open, was never moved, but the two out in Royal Market, the people had to move them themselves, and so, I mean, if it's going to cause an issue, I mean, especially the timing of the year we're at, people are going to be going out on their boats, if it's going to cause an issue, I think that we should just stop closing the launches, I mean, they're moving them out the way anyway.
If you're okay with that.
Yeah, I'm okay with that, yeah.
We'll pull all the barricades from all the launches and just have to be.
I mean, we're on an eleven o'clock curfew, so if they're closing the launches at six o'clock, you know, people go out in the afternoons for a boat ride, it doesn't even get dark till eight o'clock now, so.
Yeah, we can do that.
Done.
That's all.
Well, I'll give it to you, the question was short, the monologue was long. Okay, two more questions, just go. Anybody else for the mayor? Mr. Mayor, you have any department reports today?
No department reports.
Council reports, Dr. Tisdale?
Well, thank you, just Eisenhower dropped the railroad crossing, maybe our congressional delegation can lean on CSX or President Trump and his weekend, weekday briefings might mention CSX, but it's just, it's not getting any better, I continue to get calls, I'm sure y'all get calls, too, but we just, we got to do something. The other thing is just a reminder, small business owners out there, if you've not filed an application for that PPP money, even though what was distributed, as I understand it, is already spoken for, there's more money coming down from the feds, and what I heard today in the briefing was, if you're a small business owner and you haven't filed, be sure to file, that's it, thank you.
Councilman Newman? Councilman Lawrence?
No, he already talked.
One thing back to Paul, is, I don't know if y'all saw this, segment I was doing on TV, the subways have been taken over by homeless in New York, they got off the streets to go to Subway, so they're out of the subways all day long. I came, come into this meeting, all our bus stops that the CTA built, they filled with homeless people with garbage bags, you know, so, I mean, nobody's going to stand there and try and do anything, because they take anything, so, as the fourteen you said, it's not good, so I don't know what we can do, but the thing is, it's time to take action and do it now.
I agree. Thank you.
Councilman Barrett?
I just wanted to recognize a couple of businesses in Ward Seven, Dunaway Signs and JLC Gardens, we have. We had a sign that had been up on the corner of Real Market Road and Shriners for many years. It was rotted landscaping, it was just in really bad shape. And Dunaway Signs donated, and they're installing a new sign tomorrow, really nice. And then JLC Gardens, which is a newer business that opened up on Real Market Road, it's a big nursery, and they're doing all the landscaping for free and putting it there. So, once that's in place...
Anderson's, JLC?
John Anderson. Yes. And so, they're doing this, I'd like to recognize them. Second thing is, I rode down the beach the other day, and I know this has been brought up in the past, but some of those concrete benches are just complete ice sores, and probably dangerous. So, they're broke off, and, and so I don't know if there's anything we can do about that or not, but...
It's been maintained, for sure.
Yeah, they're just, some of them are absolutely terrible. And then, for Christie, do you know when they're going to start on the park?
Not yet, but as soon as we get started, I'll...
Okay.
We got to schedule the brick construction, we're waiting for our client to come in.
Okay, that's all I have.
Councilman Gaines?
Yes, I'd like to first thank the mayor for allowing us to use the civic center. Thank you, Mr. Creel, for your help in providing us a worker. Out of 100 and something cars, that came about, they tested about 70, and we had one positive results out of the testing that we had last Tuesday. And that one person was quarantined, he wasn't hospitalized, just quarantined. So, those are good numbers.
So, how long did it take to get the results? About a couple of days?
It took a couple of days, and I think yesterday, I think it's when the results came in.
Right. And Memorial was actually driving those issues?
In Memorial.
And do they have a testing component in their hospitals, so they don't have to send it to LabCorp or anything? Do you know how that rolls out?
I believe they had a testing component there, at their hospital, so they carried all the results back to Memorial Hospital. And again, I want to thank Beverly Martin for helping us out, Supervisor Ward 1, Supervisor, yeah, Supervisor District 1, helping us out. She bought the lunches for all the workers, and Kent Jones, who came out to help us out. They did a marvelous job out there. They want to come back and do it again, if we need that done in our area. If we see any signs of any bad areas, they would like to definitely come out. But they said it was the perfect location, everything was set up great, and they want to thank the city for everything that they've done to make this a successful run. So, I just wanted to kind of give kudos out to them.
And thank you for kind of spearheading this.
Yeah, thank you, man. And they did identify some other things, like diabetes, other health issues that was in the community, and they addressed those, sending the people where they could be helped in certain areas, things that was, clinics that would do things that would reduce costs. So, they were very helpful as far as, from the help standpoint of everything. So, I appreciate everything that you guys gave. Social distancing, do we have anyone that's kind of monitoring social distancing?
Well, the police, I think, have done a good job in seeing groups that are stacked up together, you know, they haven't been in arrest for, you know, less than six feet away, whatever, but I think they tried to give some advice on, hey, you need to break it up a little bit. But, yeah, no, we're depending on the police to try and pay attention. They've done a good job, just with the spirit of what we're trying to do, I think they've done a real good job.
Right. And the reason I ask this, because we have people who are out there, who I get calls from, that's concerned about distancing at certain restaurants, certain, you know, eateries that they have.
Operations, yeah.
Operations, so that's something that we need to kind of look at, and see if we have someone available to help us out.
We'll address that with the chief, and he's done a good job, and the fire department too, with regard to those kinds of things. At least, I think there's been a number of phone calls to, back and forth about, hey, we've seen some folks having a party, you know, in their yard, and there's about eight or nine of them right together, and I think we have actually made some calls for service to, to just give them a heads up. But we're on the lines too, as far as the health part of it. Well, a big part of this opening up America again, was not only COVID, but flu-like. Flu-like, you know, the flu actually does some damage too. So, the contact tracing and the different components, the flu is, the whole flu is still high on the radar too. So, not only COVID-19, but also flu-like conditions, what we're trying to track.
Yes, and I think they've also identified some, a few flu.
Yeah.
But of course, I think there were like, maybe about 15 or 20 of them that had the flu, but not COVID-19, which was great.
Yeah.
But they came out and made it accessible. I think we had probably about 15 walk-ups, which was very good. And Memorial was very gracious in having seats spread out with the social distancing, there was at least 10 feet apart, where they can go out there and administer the test to all of them. So, kudos to Memorial Hospital also for everything they've done. I see Melissa in the background, so you don't want to say anything? Just, they think she's with Pelican Waste, they've been doing a good job out there in the community, and I just wanted to let her have a few quick words. You want to have a quick words?
Um, I would like to say, Pelican? Yes. You guys are the three of us.
Okay. Remember your social distancing.
Um, I would like to say, on last Friday, Thursday, sorry, Tailgaters and Beluxi fed our drivers.
Oh, wow.
Our drivers work sometimes 12 to 16, 17 hours a day. And the constituents call, and they complain about the debris. We know the debris is there. We are really, really working hard on getting the debris. The drivers are there at 5:15 in the morning, they roll out by 5:45, because of the noise orders, they don't start picking up till maybe 6 o'clock. They come, our drivers, they have to take in consideration, everybody pays for a service. We are grateful to have the job, we're grateful for doing what we can do for our community in each council ward. We know that you get a million phone calls, we get the same amount, maybe more a day. But I just came to say that we are gathering to do a thing with Mr. Gaines, and some of the other four districts, and supervisors, to feed the sanitation workers. The commercials feature the nurses, the doctors, and everyone else. If you get the sanitation workers, if the sanitation workers don't pick up the trash and pick up the debris, you have a different pandemic going on. It makes it worse than what you have. So, we applaud the doctors, the nurses, the teachers, the community, we applaud everybody for your hard work and effort. We applaud your hard work and effort, because without y'all, we don't have a job, and we are very appreciative for it. But in the same token, these are different times, doing different things. So, we're trying to give back, me and my coworker, we started feeding our drivers to give them appreciation, one meal a week. So, we're just asking those community workers that would like to join in with us, to join in with us, because they deserve the appreciation. Some of them don't get home to eat a meal with their family. Some don't even get to see their wives when they get up to go to work, and don't see them when you go home, don't get to spend time with their childrens. They work six days a week. That Sunday, at the, working six days a week, working 70, 80 hours a week, you're dead tired on Sunday. How can you do as a parent, or a husband, or a wife, and be attentive to your family? And others complain. We're not complaining. I'm just showing a little gratitude to my coworkers at this tough time, and that's what we're doing. So, if you would like to, Mr. Dixie, Mr. Lawrence, Mr. Demme, Council Vice President, can't see your name because I'm not blind.
Councilman Barrett?
Gaines, Mr. Galvin, Mr. Tisdale, my former principal, and Mr. Fofo. If you all like to come together and help us, we are very appreciative. We just don't want to feed Pelican Waste people, sanitation guys, we want to feed Waste everybody, because we're all doing it together. If we don't have a team, you can't work, you got to be a team. We're all for one cause, keeping everybody healthy, pick up the debris, pick up the trash. And it will not get done overnight. It takes time. Families are home, you've been home for 21 days, maybe longer. You're cleaning out your garages, your closets, houses, you're tearing stuff down, you're digging up, you're doing everything that you didn't have the time to do when you worked. If you was at a regular workday, you would not have the time to cut limbs, everything you're doing. But we're just asking you just to, just say, hey, good job, Pelican, hey, good job, Waste Management, just tell them good job, give them something to say you appreciate, because they're taking, they're taking from their families, and most of everybody is at home with their families. So, we appreciate you.
We do appreciate you, you know, from day one, since you came here, you're owner, and it's been very gracious, and, you know, we appreciate you, and we know you're overwhelmed with regard to what's going on now. So, if you'll let us know when, where, or what to do, we'll be happy to do those things, you know, as persons and caring individuals for not only Pelican Waste, but, you know, the other folks that are doing a good job. So, email us and give us some hints on those things, and we'll do that. I do thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
That concludes my report.
Councilman Glavin?
Yeah, I want to echo her comments. My wife found out a long time ago, if you take care of them and bring a little care package every once in a while, they'll, they'll actually do a little extra, extra. And I think they actually beep the horn a little bit when they pass by our house, just to get my wife's attention, to bring a little, you know, booty out to them, so that is important. And also on Tailgaters, that's Judd Atkins, the proprietor and owner of Tailgaters in Ward 6, I'm glad to see him stepping up and feeding all those folks, that is very, very Also, I read recently, I think Public Relations put out a report, that even though we're in this shelter at home, and I, it's more than a shelter at home, like, again, the testimony over here, people are not just sheltering, they're being productive, and they're doing things, and they're keeping busy. And I'm riding around my road every afternoon, and I can't tell the people who are walking and exercising and doing yard work, and they're connecting more so than ever. Our community is connecting, our nation is connecting. And you got the, from the president to the governors, to our state representatives, down to the mayor, we're all connecting because we're all in this together. And the sacrifices that are being made, and what our children, again, I reiterated this last time, our children are going to come out of this more inspired to be probably the best doctors and best people in the world, when they know where our priorities are and what we had to do to overcome this. So, I just wanted to get that in. Also, we talked a couple of weeks ago about scheduling in May some budget workshops to see where we are, so I just want to make sure we don't lose track of that. And I know we've got 1,000 things to do, but that needs to be a priority, that we can kind of, kind of get an idea of where our shortfalls are going to be, you know, I've heard numbers like 10 million or 20 million, I don't know exactly where it's going to be, but I think it's important that we know how we're going to have to adjust and kind of get a pulse to that, Mayor.
Yeah, no, we're all on that, and we're trying to do some cash flow and some what-if games right now, and we're bird dog, you know, these things are every week. One little example, which is kind of surprising, you know, we were off to a record start in gaming, and I think for sales tax too, because I'm just reading the sales tax figure that we just got distributed for March business, which was only pretty much a half, you know, without tourists and without those other things, I thought it would, you know, but we were, as opposed to 955,000 last year, we collected 912,000 this year, for that March timeframe, and again, we were shut down half of that March. Same thing with gaming revenue, it was surprising. I mean, we're not out of the woods, you know, we, if we are opening, you know, by June 1, or, you know, even May 15, things will ramp up, and now it may be 70% of what we projected, but those are numbers that we can work with, and we'll be prepared for May and to discuss what needs to be done with the budget. Now, we've got a lot of discussion with Dr. Tisdale today, that we have some cushions and some things that we could manage this thing. But so far, you know, we're not shaking, so, it's a little inside joke there, but we'll manage this thing.
The mayor let me, at this point, you know, it's like Mr. Magoo, I mean, Mr. Magoo, you couldn't say very well, April numbers, until we see the April numbers, we don't really know what the bogey is that we have to, we have to close. Because as the mayor pointed out, by the end of March, we were looking great. I mean, our March numbers are great, at the half-year point in the year, we were above budget.
Yeah.
On revenue, and below budget on expenses, so we were right where we wanted to be. But until we see the April numbers, we can't really, can't really tell you.
Well, we know what our gaming revenues were in April, so we know what those were.
Yeah, well, you know what the totals are, you don't know how much we've been given, though. In other words, the distribution down to us hasn't come yet. But we're trying to do some things, some examples that we're already doing. You remember, we bought two fire trucks for a million dollars. Well, they were to be delivered in the fiscal year, that we, in this fiscal year, and in a budget in this fiscal year, that delivery has been delayed now, so they don't come till the next fiscal year. That's the money that we're not going to have to pay out. Same thing for a bucket truck that we're doing, that we already were purchased, it's already purchased and was being constructed for us, that we're doing lease purchase to push it back into the next year. And we're trying to, you know, limit expenses, we have a hiring freeze on, so we're doing what we know we can do right now, but until we see those April numbers, we can't really come tell you what big measures are going to be required.
You just got all the revenue numbers, but there's some opportunities, you know, even like the, I think, the federal government storing 4-point-something billion gallons of, a billion barrels of oil right now, because they have a place to store it. So, there's some opportunity for refinancing and to do some of the things that we could do, since zero is the interest rate now, and, you know, there's some opportunities to look at the whole picture of SRF loans and state loans, or the loans that we're in the middle of now. I think we're about ready to pull the trigger on the 2014, 2014 loan.
Right, you've already approved us refinancing the 2014, 14 million dollar bond, and that's, we're just waiting for the interest rate to hit just to tick the right point, and we're ready to pull the string. But we asked us, people that are helping us with that bond, look at the baseball park 21 million dollar bond as well at the same time, we might be able to refinance both of those this fall. So, those are all things that are working behind the scenes, but the actual workshop that we need to have with you, we ought to be able to do that, as soon as we have all the April numbers. We can't really, it wouldn't make sense to do it before that, because we don't know what the bogey is.
All right, and then one last thing, and it is one last thing. I want to thank the mayor, and thank Mike for coming out for the raising of the largest American flag in the state of Mississippi at Camp David in Ward 6. Mark Parish is the owner there, and I'm telling you, he is working his property, he is personally...
High energy, no doubt.
High energy, I think he can keep up with the mayor, I think.
I think, ask me, ask me, man. He was something.
But he is zipping around that property, he has personally cleared most of it, he was setting the cement in the base of the actual flag, and if you get a chance to ride down Cedar Lake, look over there and see that property and see that very beautiful American flag, the largest in the state of Mississippi, that's flying proud and flying at night, it's lit, and people on the river get to see it.
50 by 80, I think, 50 by 80.
I mean, it's a huge flag, but it's a symbol, again, of who we are, and what we are, and where we're going to be when we come out of this thing. So, and with that, that concludes my report.
All right, that leaves me. First, I want to, Ms. Melissa from Pelican Waste, I heard the statistics today that you guys are picking up 300 tons per week more than your typical loads. Do you know what your weekly loads are?
I don't know.
Okay, if you would, I just want to know, because when I tell my residents that these guys are working hard, if you guys are picking up twice as much, three times as much, or even, even another half a percentage of what you're picking up, it's more work, and I just want to be able to tell the people that. And we do thank you and appreciate you for coming today and the hard work you do, and I promise, if you keep picking up our trash, we'll keep making more. The CTA, I'm just interested to see how this is going to affect their budget and necessities when funding comes along.
Absolutely, but CTA as well as the library, so, those are two elements of what we're kind of scanning at this point in time.
If I could, I want to make a quick public service announcement, there's going to be another community testing at the Real Market Community Center, held by Memorial, on Tuesday, April 28th at 9:00. on Tuesday, April twenty-eighth, at nine AM to three PM at the Will Market Community Center. Lastly, Jerry, I know you were involved in an email chain with the mayor, I think, regarding the parking on Lafayette Street, the live oak tree that died. I know you went out there and you assessed the situation, and while I appreciate your assessment, I was wondering if we could, or if it would be appropriate to hire an unbiased third-party arborist. Obviously, we have some of our members of our community that are tree enthusiasts and are very upset about the death of this tree. And they feel that there's been some political gaiety going on, because obviously, we passed this project. You reviewed it, and our arborist is hired by the city of Biloxi. Could we hire a disinterested third-party to review it, to verify?
I would ask the state, since this is their project, and this is, you know, they didn't have to do a lot of things that we tried to do together. The state has arborists too, that should be, you know, considered true and valid. And, you know, I'm one hundred percent confident that, so anyway, that's it. To settle, you know, a few, you know, ninety-nine percent of the deal is, we're trying to settle one percent of the questions. But, yeah, no, we can take a look, but I don't know what that will accomplish, but we're willing to look at it.
Well, that's, look, I have full confidence in our staff and Mr. Creo. Of course, the great Ronald Reagan said trust will verify. And I think that our constituents would respect and.
A Russian said that.
I'm sorry?
A Russian said that. Had he quoted from a Russian?
He quoted from a Russian?
He did.
And maybe it's not as valid anymore. That will complete my report. We will move on to the public agenda. I've got citizens' comments, who have forty-five minutes allowed, three minutes per person. Knowing that there's no one in this room, have we created a mechanism for the public to communicate with us?
No.
One way? Well, that'll make that quicker. We'll move over to the policy agenda now. Just for the public, if you want to comment, find any one of us on the website. You'll find it, your councilperson's phone number and email. Communicate with us. Let us know what your issues are before these meetings, and we'd be happy to address them. We move to ordinance A, the policy agenda.
We have a public hearing first.
Do we have a public hearing? Ah, I apologize. There is a public hearing to designate a landmark. Do you want to read the public hearing?
Yes. Public hearing to discuss the proposed ordinance amendment designated one sixty-five Gil Avenue as Biloxi landmark.
This hearing will consist of twenty minutes, ten minutes for people for it, and ten minutes for people against it. Are there anybody to speak for this project? Mr. Creo, anyone?
I can tell a little bit about what's going on here. I think the best way to address this is just to read this short narrative that was submitted by the applicant. It came from Mr. John E. Fales, who is the owner of one sixty-five Gil Avenue. And he tells a little bit about the history. Thomas F. Gil residing in Perry, Missouri, started conducting business in Biloxi around eighteen eighty, and actually moved here in eighteen ninety-two, building a home on the south end of Gil Avenue with a pier extending into the Gulf and an artesian well. It was also one of the first times on the beach to have electricity. Mr. Gil was a banker, financier, mule trader, and a silent partner with the late Thomas J. Rozell, owner of Thomas J. Rozell Manufacturing Company. Mr. Rozell was a friend of Mr. Gil, who had also moved here from Missouri in eighteen ninety-five to start his company. Mr. Rozell manufactured all of the items needed for building a house. And many older homes in our city had materials purchased from them, especially exterior trim used on the Victorian homes. In the various wheeling and dealings by Mr. Gil, he ended up owning all of the land on Gil Avenue and Forest Avenue. In eighteen ninety-four, Mr. Gil made this land called the Gil Subdivision a part of Biloxi. In eighteen ninety-five, May Topkins Gil, the son of Thomas Gil, bought the lot at one sixty-five Gil, and sometime between then and nineteen hundred, built the present house. In further research, Mr. Fales found that a Paul W. Brillmeyer, who was superintendent for the Rozell Company, supervised the building of this home, along with one sixty and one seventy Gil around nineteen ten. Mr. Brillmeyer also built the house called by his name, but served as our visitor center on the Biloxi town green prior to Katrina. Sadly, Mr. Gil, Mr. Thomas Gil, died of yellow fever in eighteen ninety-seven, with one of his daughters passing a month later. With the passing of May Gil's father and sister, he decided to leave Biloxi and sold the house to his father's old partner, Mr. Rozell, on October the twelfth of nineteen oh four. Mr. Fales was unable to trace what happened to the home after nineteen oh four. But as interest, Mr. Rozell was instrumental in building the first West End firehouse, and he served as mayor of Biloxi in nineteen oh nine and again in nineteen ten. Also of interest, Thomas Gil was the one who built the train station that used to be on Gil Avenue, because he wanted the train to stop there for him. While doing this research, Mr. Fales found it truly amazing how much history there was in Biloxi and all of the various people or characters who helped build our city. I'm not sure if you have a picture of the house in your packet, but this is the house that we're talking about. It's one sixty-five Gil. It's south of Irish Hill on the west side. And he did a tremendous job restoring this house, and I'll pass it around so that you all can take a look at it. But it clearly deserves to be a landmark, a Biloxi landmark, and the AHRC actually voted to approve it.
I have a question.
Councilman Lawrence?
Either you need to answer it, lawyer, a PA, why are we doing this? Why are you having a public, we have anything to be approved? Why are we having a public hearing on this? Is somebody against this?
No, no one showed up to oppose this.
We've never done this, not have a public hearing.
Yes, sir.
I mean, I don't know. I'm just saying, what are we doing all this for? And then all the compliance, all the criteria, everything was met. So what is this public hearing for? I mean, who did that? Who called for a public hearing?
I don't know.
Is this procedural?
Yes, it is. They paid their cost.
Usually we just have a first and a second reading.
We don't have a public hearing. What are you doing? You need to do everything you're supposed to do, but you're not for this. And just wasting time. I mean, nobody's going to go against it. The God, what are you supposed to do? I don't understand a public hearing at all.
All right, Mr. Lawrence, your contention is noted. Do you have, well, I'm not allowed to say, but the ship's sailed. We're in this hearing right now. Next landmark, when addressed this issue, I don't disagree with you. You're right. This is the first time we've, well, this is one or two times we've done this before, but we've passed many of them without these hearings.
Yes.
Are there any other questions for Mr. Creo, on behalf of the property being designated as a landmark? So anybody here to speak in opposition of this property being designated a landmark? There being none, that hearing is closed. Now we'll move on to resolution. Excuse me, ordinance A, please.
Ordinance to amend section twenty-three, three, five of the code of ordinance to designate an additional building as a Biloxi landmark.
This was, this is a second reading. This was initially moved by George Lawrence and seconded by Paul Tisdale. So Lawrence, do you have any discussion?
I agree with you. I did everything I was supposed to do, but all the criteria, I'm in favor of it all the way.
Councilman Tisdale, any discussion?
A very nice job on the work done on that house. I mean, really nice, and I agree with George, no problem.
Any other discussion? Jerry, thank you for the presentation. All in favor, please signal with the raise of your hand. Motion carries unanimously. We'll move to resolution B.
Noted.
Resolution for a final subdivision plan for Cedar Crescent subdivision.
Second. Moved by Kenny Glavin, seconded by Nathan Barrett, excuse me, moved by, by Nathan Barrett, seconded by Kenny Glavin. Nathan, discussion? Councilman Glavin? Any discussion on the board? Board being none. All in favor, please signal with the raise of your hand. Motion carries unanimously. We'll move to the consent agenda.
I'll make that motion.
Got a motion on the consent agenda from Paul Tisdale, and a second by Dixie Newman. Mr. Tisdale, any items you'd like to discuss on the consent agenda?
Uh, no items, thank you.
Councilwoman Newman. Councilman Lawrence?
That's a routine business.
Councilman Barrett?
I have none.
I thought I was going to have time to collect my thoughts. Councilman Guines?
None.
Councilman Glavin? Mike, Keith downstairs was talking about the reorganization of funding for the copier downstairs. He saw that there was a resolution coming up, and he gave some history about that. I don't see it on this agenda.
It was already passed.
Our problem was solved. We were, we were, it's water under the bridge right now, that everything's solved. That we got a big copier upstairs, we got a big copier downstairs, and.
From what my understanding is, is that the copier downstairs is being put one hundred percent on the Biloxi council's budget.
That was the plan. It's, that's been.
Correct. It's fifty-fifty again. Okay. And then I have nothing further, even though it wasn't even on this consent agenda. Do we have any objections to any item on the agenda? There being none. Those of you in favor, please signal with the raise of your hand. Motion carries unanimously. This will bring us to the routine agenda. Do we have any code enforcement hearings? Nothing? Routine agenda, do I move it?
I'll move the routine.
I'll second.
Moved by Phoenix Science, seconded by Paul Tisdale. Gentlemen, discussion? Councilman Lawrence?
We had a good week, a bad week. It's a good week. Thank you.
For the record, it was Walt Wery responding. All in favor of the routine agenda? Motion carries unanimously.
I'll make the motion recess.
I'll second.
Do I have a motion recess? It's motion by Paul Tisdale, I'll second it, by Phoenix Science, all in favor?
Mr. President, before we actually vote, could I amend that? And we can close in memory of Captain Schultz, who was a Vietnam boat builder for the city of Biloxi in the Gulf Coast. Could we add that?
Yeah, if that's a motion, Kenny, I'd second that. I'm sure most of us would.
So we'll amend the motion to.
Close in memory of. Captain Tommy Schultz.
That's all good.
Did you get that? Captain.
Tommy. Tommy Schultz.
Tommy Schultz.
Uncle Tommy. Day community development every morning, drinking his coffee.
All in favor of closing this meeting in the name in honor of Captain Tommy Schultz? Signal with the raise of your hand.
Definitely.
Motion carries unanimously.